So if you see this before, you turn it around, it says contain 0.2 grams of powder. Black gloves, black. I missed you. Okay, I'm trying not to get stuck anywhere. I'm trying to be out of here.
How you doing?
Hi, how are you? Good morning, I'm good. Yeah, making sure that. Exactly that. Oh, thank you. Good morning. Good morning. Oh, I love this scarf. Whatever it is, right? Right. It's cute. Thank you. I'm good. You gotta use words.
Well, good morning, everyone. Happy Tuesday to you. Absolutely. Today is Tuesday, December the 13th. Absolutely. Commissioners, we finally made it. This is the absolute final meeting for the year to conduct the people's business here in Rockdale County. This has been a very productive year and quite intense year. We are super excited to be here this morning, and we want to call our meeting to order.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So this morning, we'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by none other than our Deputy Director Vaughn Jamison of the Rockdale Water Resources Department. Director Jamison.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners.
Good morning.
Can we pray? Kind Father, we thank you for another day. We thank you, God, because as we look back over the last three years, we've made it. We've made it through great trial and tribulation, but we made it. We made it sometimes with heartache and hurt ache, God, but we made it, and we have nobody to thank but you. So as we round the corner to 2023, we round it with a grateful heart. We say thank you for keeping us. Thank you for crowning our elected officials with wisdom as they lead this great county called Rockdale. We thank you, Lord, because we are on our way to something better than we've ever seen in our life, and it's nobody but you that we have to thank you for. So Father, as we go into this holiday season, we pray right now that we say with a grateful heart that as we look back over everything we've been through, nobody was able to bring us to this place but you. So we honor you, we thank you. Allow love to flow heart to heart and breast to breast in Rockdale County because we stand with a common goal to make Rockdale great. We honor you and we thank you for it. It's in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Deputy Director Vaughn Jamison for always supporting and coming through and representing RWR. Now we have special recognitions by none other than our Executive Director Tony Holmes from the Department of Talent Management. Director Holmes.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman and Madam Commissioners. We are super excited this morning. It is December 13th. It's that time of year where we recognize Rockdale County employees. We do that throughout the year, but again, this particular time is really, really special. This morning, Chairman, we want to first recognize our employees that have achieved either certification completion, they've either achieved a degree completion by participating in our career development, our training and development initiatives, as well as participating in our tuition reimbursement program. So I am going to call up these individuals. We will present them with a certification. I do want them, as they come up, to go ahead and stand up here in the front. We're going to do a group picture. We're going to celebrate you as we continue to advance our employees here in Rockdale County.
Outstanding.
The first person I would like to call up is Ms. Celeste Printup. She is from the Tax Assessors, and her completion today, I want to tell exactly what she is receiving this morning. Yes, sorry. Oh, that's so much better. Good morning. Ms. Celeste Printup, she has completed in recognition of successful completion of a master's degree in public administration from Strayer University. Celeste has been... She has been participating in our tuition reimbursement program. This next one, and this is a surprise, I talked to her yesterday, so I don't think she expected this, but this is going to be Commissioner Sheri L. Washington. In recognition of successful completion of NACO's Professional Development Academy, their High Performance Leadership Track. These are all of the employees, elected officials, that have completed awards, Mr. Chairman, for 2022. So Commissioner Washington.
Let's give them another round of applause.
This next person, she's our E911 Communications Division Manager, Ms. Maisha Callaway. In recognition of successful completion of Executive Command Leadership Development Course for the Atlanta Police Leadership Institute. Maisha Callaway. This next one, she is not here this morning, and I believe on her behalf is going to be Chief McDaniel, receiving for Ms. Sharon Webb, and she has completed her Associate's Degree in Fire Science from Columbia Southern University. And Sharon is our Deputy Fire Chief. The next person, Mr. Gerald Woodridge from EMA. And Mr. Woodridge, in recognition of successful completion of Advanced Certified Emergency Manager Certification for the State of Georgia, EMA Gerald Woodbridge.
Wow.
This next person from fire, Mr. James Robinson, in recognition of successful completion of Fire Protection Engineering from Eastern Kentucky University, James Robinson. You guys got to get closer. All right, this next person, this is my neighbor. He is Deputy for Tax Assessor, Mr. Max Terry, in recognition of successful completion of Appraiser Certification from the Georgia Department of Revenue, and I'm sorry, Appraiser Four, I believe, yes. Okay, will you come up and receive it on his behalf?
All right.
This is our other deputy. All right, this individual has received two from Techno... Nope, 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 sorry. I'm jumping ahead. This person has received in recognition of successful completion of SharePoint Online for Administrator Certification. That's Mr. Edward Greenway, Ed Greenway, Technology Services. Lot of certifications and training coming out of Technology Services this year. We can actually start going to the left. Okay.
Let's give it another round of applause.
And this person has received two certifications, also out of Technology Services. The first one in recognition of completion of NACO Enterprise Cybersecurity Leadership Master Certification. That's for Mr. Bruce Patterson. The second one is completion of AX2000 Magnet Axiom Certification. So two certifications for Mr. Bruce Patterson, Technology Services. Also, Technology Services, in recognition of successful completion of NACO Enterprise Cybersecurity Leadership Master Certification. Extremely important, Ms. Trelana Carter.
Yes.
I was just trying to see if Trelana was here because she was in our office earlier. I'm like, she's in two places at one time. She got over here pretty quickly. I turned around, like, she came quickly. This next one, this is for our Director of Technology Services, Director Margaret Moore Jackson, also completing the NACO Enterprise Cybersecurity Leadership Master Certification. Okay, this individual, two certifications for him as well. This is our Deputy Director of Technology Services, Mr. Gerald May, to start making his way up here. And Gerald Casey has also completed the NACO Enterprise Cybersecurity Leadership Master Certification. In addition to that, Deputy Director May has done, completed of SCUM, S-C-R-U-M, Master Certification as well. So Deputy Director Gerald May. Okay, okay, a few more, a few more here. Our Division Manager for Animal Services, Mr. C.G. Baker. In recognition of successful completion of Principles of Contemporary Animal Services from Southern Utah University, Mr. C.G. Baker.
And C.G. is also our Employee of the Year. So give him another round of applause.
All right, and this next person, Technology Services, come on down, Ms. Vicki Gibson.
Yes.
Vicki Gibson has also, in recognition of successful completion of the SCUM Master Certification, Ms. Vicki Gibson, Technology Services. All right, and we have one more employee that we would like to recognize for this particular season, and it's going to go to Ms. Melissa Pugh. She has two certifications, Chairman and Madam Commissioners. The first one, in recognition of successful completion of Leadership Rockdale. So she is part of Class of 22 here in Rockdale County, Ms. Melissa Pugh. And the second one, in recognition of successful completion of her Bachelor of Business Administration from Strayer University, Ms. Melissa Pugh. Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners, again, we are so proud of all of these individuals for participating in Rockdale County training and development, career development, career pathing, working towards your future, along with the degree completions this year. So again, can we give them another round of applause? All right, and again, congratulations. Thank you so much for your continued success. I love you also. All right. Okay. This next session, Chairman, Madam Commissioners, is our recognition is our recognition of service awards. So we recognize our employees twice a year for their years of service. Today, we're going to be recognizing seven employees for years of service. That includes 20 years of service along with 30 years of service. If we can, can we do the video? Video. I feel like dancing and celebration. So what an uplifting moment for our employees. We appreciate, again, achieving success, but also the employees that have been dedicated and committed to Rockdale County. At this time, I am going to call up our representatives, nominees, award recipients as a representative, and then we're also going to bring up someone from their leadership department to speak on their behalf. I do want to start with our 20 years, and we're going to start with, from the Sheriff's Office, Darren Benedict, Sheriff's Office. Darren Benedict, for 20 years of service. He's not here, okay. Okay, we will go to Marcus Felton, also from Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, 20 years of service. Okay, and at this time, we will call up a representative from Rockdale County Sheriff's Office to speak on behalf of Mr. Mark Felton for 20 years of service.
So Lieutenant, let me turn around. Lieutenant Benedict could not be here today. So we will accept this award on his behalf as my two recipients, they've been here for 20 years, a long time serving the citizens of Rockdale County, and most importantly, our agency. As being biased, those two deputies and all of my staff, me and women of the Sheriff's Office, are some of the hardest working individuals of this county. We do it all, even things that's not within our job titles, we do. So we very much appreciate the hard work and dedication and the sacrifices that they have done for this agency over the last 20 years. So Lieutenant Felton, continue the good work. We've bounced him around due to his leadership skills from the jail to Uniform Patrol. He got a little taste of that, and now he's back in the jail again. Continue on his leadership skills in our jail, which is a very challenging area of our organization. I call our jail a mini-city. Our jail is a 747-bed facility. We have roughly 300, what was the last count? Three... 303 inmates in our jail, and then we have roughly over 100 and something employees in our jail. So that's a little city in itself, and so to challenge all of that, that they challenge in the jail and on the street is a tremendous sacrifice. So we thank you for your dedication.
Okay, our next 20-year recipient, Mr. Keith Fisher, who works in Water Resources, has been with Rockdale County for 20 years. Mr. Fisher, if you can come up, and then we're also going to have someone from Rockdale Water Resources Leadership to make comments on your behalf.
Well, Keith has been with us for a while, as you can see. Keith has started with RWR in 20, in December of 2002. In September of '03, he transferred to the water treatment plant as an operator. Keith has also achieved all required certifications, including his most recent, which is the Class 1 Water Treatment Operator, the highest certification you can receive at the water treatment plant. Keith shares his life with his wife Denise, and he's had extensive experience in before water with Georgia Power, so he's also able to bring his electrical experience. He's a valuable asset. Unfortunately, or fortunately for Keith, Keith will be in the next few months retiring. And so we just appreciate all that he's brought to Rockdale Water Resources, and we certainly wish him the best in his future endeavors.
Congratulations again. We do have one more person for 20 years of service, and this is going to be Ms. Karen Johnson from the Tax Commissioners Office. If she can come up. Who's going to be speaking on her behalf this morning is Deputy Director Eric Washington. So Karen Johnson and Deputy Director Washington.
Yes. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
The Commissioner could not be here today, so I am standing in for her. She's out handling county business, okay? We all have a lot to say about Karen, but that would take all day. So what we did, we asked everybody in the office to come up with something that describes Karen. I will read the list. Karen is feisty. Karen is outspoken. Not only is she feisty and outspoken, she also, she's the person that if you do not want the answer, do not ask her the question. Karen will tell it like it is. She'll keep it 100% all the time. She will be rough, but her roughness is taken in a way that it's a learning experience. So everybody appreciates everything Karen does, everything Karen says. Everybody in Rockdale County knows Karen, okay? They ask for Karen. We ask Karen to do many things in the office, and what we find is the people she's asking, they want to work on her team, okay? So we have to be careful of that. Everybody wants to work for Karen. But the word that describes her the best is we love her. We love everything she does, and we appreciate... We love everything she does, and we appreciate her. Twenty years, she could teach everybody in the office. Thank you, Karen.
Chair and Madam Commissioners, we are now, we have three employees to recognize for thirty years of service, so super excited about that. We are now going to call up Mr. George Archer, Water Resources, thirty years of service, as well as someone from the leadership team. Chairman, we did want to, for the thirty years of service, they do receive their thirty-year clock. So we're going to hand this over to Mr. Archer, and we will allow Deputy Director Jamison to speak on his behalf.
Good morning again. Of course, to know George is to love George. George has been George has been with us since nineteen ninety-seven. He actually started his career with Rockdale County Public Works Department in ninety-seven. He worked there, and then in nineteen ninety-seven, he began working with Central Maintenance Division. While at Central Maintenance, he installed meters, repaired water meters, performed sewer taps, and repaired sewer mains and installed new sewer infrastructure. George has done it all. He moved from a crewman to a foreman while at Central Maintenance, and in two thousand and twelve, he transferred to the water treatment plant as a mechanical maintenance technician. Currently, George holds the position of Mechanical Maintenance Coordinator. Throughout his thirty years of service, he has achieved a CDL license, Class A license, certifications in water distribution and sewer collections, and he recently added a Class Two Mechanical Maintenance Certification to his growing list. Today, he's joined with his wife of over twenty years, Shelley Archer. We just want to say congratulations again, George.
Look, I want to see Ms. Shelley Archer. You gonna wave? Congratulations.
Yes.
All right, this next person who works in our Transportation Department, thirty years of service, Mr. Rodney Durden, and Director Kelly will come up and make comments on his behalf. Thirty years of service, Rodney.
So what can you say about Mr. Durden? He's been here with us since nineteen ninety-two. He's a constant in the Rockdale Department of Transportation. He's a building block. Never had any complaints. If it's snow, sleet, hail, he's there. So he takes care of business day in, day out. He's what you need as part of our foundation, and we're happy to have him here with us in Rockdale. So we appreciate you, appreciate your service, Rodney.
Okay, and this last person, also thirty years of service, Ms. Martha Kilpatrick is not here today. Sheriff Levitt and his team will receive this award on her behalf. She is a school crossing guard, Chairman, Madam Commissioners, thirty years of service, Sheriff Levitt.
Well, Ms. Martha Kilpatrick, let me tell you. I need about three hundred of Ms. Martha Kilpatrick. You're probably wondering why I'm saying that. As been stated, she's been here thirty years. Well, most of you don't know, the job of a school crossing guard is to get the kids across the street, and oftentimes to get the buses in and out of the, in and out of the school over the years. When doing that, they have to work in the, sometimes it's snow, sometimes it rains, and definitely in the cold, and definitely when it's really, really hot outside. This lady, what a lot of you don't know, has been with us thirty years. I've been sheriff, this is my tenth year, and I've not heard one complaint from this lady, not one. I've not heard of one time that she's ever called out of work. And in fact, several years ago, she'd taken a fall. She got up and came to work the next day. And for those of you who do not know Ms. Martha Kilpatrick, she's eighty-three years old. Eighty-three years old, serving the citizens of Rockdale County in the capacity of a school crossing guard, not complaining to the number of sheriffs that she's worked under, to the number of uniform commanders that she's worked under, to the number of parents and driving by, and just different people driving by, probably cussing at her and giving her the finger, or whatever the case may be, because she stopped them and held them up and made them a little bit, little bit delayed in getting to and from their destination. She stood there each and every day, providing her dedication to those children, to the school system, and to the citizens of Rockdale County at the age of eighty-three. She just recently contacted us and told us that she has to leave her position. And the only reason why she's leaving that position is just because she's got an injury to her hand, which has prevented her from holding the stop sign up or waving the kids and the cars and the buses coming in and out. And so other than that, I don't believe, and we truly do not believe, that she would have left this job and left this post. And we recently done a, a drive-by celebrating her about a couple of months ago, and just appreciating her sacrifice, her dedication, and her birthday. And so we're going to truly miss her. We wish we had a bunch of Ms. Martha Kilpatrick. As all of us are directors in some form or manager, you know how it is in keeping employees employed and not hearing the complaints that we often hear. This is a model for all young people, and in fact, this is a model for all of us as adults. We should never come to work and have anything to complain about, because this lady set the example for all of us, and we appreciate her sacrifice and her dedication. Let's give her a round of applause.
I think eighty-three years old and working like that, she deserves a standing ovation. I don't stand up because she can't.
If I start now, I'll be eighty-three in thirty years, and the sheriff can say the same thing about me.
Chairman and Madam Commissioners, again, thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity to recognize not only our achievements in terms of certifications and degree completion, but also our committed and dedicated employees for years of service. So that concludes our presentation, and again, thank you so much.
Let's give them all another round of applause. Commissioners, it speaks volumes to the dedication and the hard work of so many of our employees throughout all of the departments in Rockdale County. And then to hear the stories about all of the work ethic of folks spending twenty, thirty, then having an employee at eighty-three years old, that says a lot about dedication and the strong work ethic of our employees here in Rockdale County. Let's give them another round of applause. I also want to make mention, Commissioners, about the career development and training we implemented back in two thousand seventeen, under the leadership of our Executive Director of Talent Management, Tony Holmes, who's done an exceptional job making sure that we bring programs and opportunities for employees to advance their careers. And we even revamped our tuition reimbursement program so that those employees who are interested in investing in their own careers from an educational standpoint will have the opportunity to do that, and it will really make a big difference. So thank you to the work of Talent Management and what you all have done, but thank you to our employees who have made the decision to make an investment into their own careers and making sure, because when they become better employees, Rockdale County continues to become a better place. Let's give them another round of applause. We've got a couple of more, we have another presentation that we're saving until after the presentation from Mr. Bill Johnston, our consultant who's working with our planning and development. He, Mr. Bill Johnston is a consultant who's working with our Planning and Development Department. Come on up, Bill, as I'm talking, and he is with the Strategic Planning Initiatives Organization, and he's going to give us an update on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for Rockdale County, which is a big, big deal. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Rockdale County will soon begin the process of updating the two thousand eighteen Comprehensive Plan. This will be done in conjunction with Atlanta Regional Commission. The Comprehensive Plan was referred to in the two thousand eighteen plan as a vision document designed to formulate a coordinated, long-term planning program. The vision is based on an assessment of population trends, employment data, and development patterns characterizing Rockdale County. A R C will be instrumental in generating the huge volume of information essential to answer the question, where are we now as a community? A very significant part of the Comprehensive Plan is the Character Areas Map. This map identifies the land uses projected for each section of the county and is a critical guide to zoning decisions by the Board of Commissioners. Of the eight criteria used by the Planning and Development Staff, Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners referred to as the standards governing the exercise of zoning power in the United or Unified Development Ordinance, that's the U D O that's referred to. Consistency with the Comprehensive Plan, including the land use designated on the Character Areas Map, may be the most important. That is because the Character Areas Map rests on the goals, objectives, and policies encompassed in the plan. The goals, objectives, and policies are developed during the comprehensive planning process. They're based on the development trends identified in the assessment, development already on the ground, community input, including the development community, planning and development staff input, Planning Commission input, and the perspectives of the Board of Commissioners. These goals, objectives, and policy statements answer the question, where do we want to be? And are rooted in a year-long process of public input. Jumping ahead to how do we best get there concerns implementation strategies. Some well-known, and others the fruit of a creative process among all of the actors, including Rockdale County departmental staff, and sound planning practice. Some will be short-term strategies, others long-term, and set in a community work program tied to a schedule by year, cost estimates, funding sources, and responsible parties. A significant initiative of a Comprehensive Plan is found in small-area plans. Hopefully, the plan update will incorporate recommendations of the Millstead Village Revitalization Plan that will breathe new life into an historic neighborhood. This could encompass a focused effort in conjunction with the Georgia Conservancy, which was instrumental in producing a revitalization plan. As concerns public participation, and the plan process is all about public participation, really. The Georgia Department of Community Affairs has established minimum standards and procedures for comprehensive planning. Public participation is a critical aspect of that, of those procedures. The rules of the Georgia Department of Community Affairs establish the process to be followed in producing a comprehensive plan. The comprehensive planning process begins with a public hearing to inform the community of the procedures to be followed in developing the plan, opportunities for public participation, and to obtain public input concerning the planning process. Once public comments have been addressed, the community may begin the process of developing the plan. Each portion of the plan must be prepared with substantial involvement and input from stakeholders, elected leaders, and the public following the process specified in Section one-ten-dash-twelve-dash-one-dash-zero-two-two. This section contains three steps intended to help ensure that the plan reflects community needs and values, and that the plan will be implemented. These three steps are identify stakeholders, compile a list of stakeholders who need to have a voice in the development of the plan. Members of the Board of Commissioners must be included as stakeholders and be actively involved in preparation of the plan, such as serving on a steering committee that guides development of the plan. Second step, adopt public participation techniques. At a minimum, a steering committee that will participate in development of the plan that includes such stakeholders as the commission members, local economic development experts, and the Rockdale Department of Planning and Development Staff. Step three, implement the participation program. Invite each of the stakeholders to participate in activities and events designed to enhance participation by the stakeholders. County is encouraged to use these events to solicit input on the content of the plan. Regular meetings of the steering committee should be held to solicit feedback as the plan is developed. A second public hearing must be held once the plan has been drafted and made available for public review. Purpose of this hearing is to brief the community on the contents of the plan, provide an opportunity for the public to offer recommendations, and to notify the community of the next step in the process, which is to submit the plan to the Atlanta Regional Commission for review. Upon completion of the plan, the Board of Commissioners must transmit the plan to A R C. Upon receipt, A R C shall immediately forward the plan to the Department of Community Affairs for review. Once A R C has accepted the plan for review, that agency must immediately notify interested parties of availability of the plan for review and comment. Interested parties must include jurisdictions adjacent to Rockdale County, any local authorities, special districts, or other entities involved in intergovernmental coordination, and affected state agencies, including the Department of Transportation, the Department of Natural Resources, and the Department of Community Affairs. A R C shall review the plan for potential conflicts with plans of neighboring jurisdictions, opportunities for solutions to common issues, and consistency with the regional plan. The Department of Community Affairs shall review the plan for compliance with the minimum standards and procedures. This review may result in identification of deficiencies that must be resolved before the plan can be approved. D C A's findings and recommendations resulting from its review shall be transported, transmitted to A R C for inclusion in a final report. A R C must then transmit a report of D C A findings and recommendation to the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners. Once the plan has been found by D C A to comply with the minimum standards and procedures, the Board of Commissioners may adopt the approved plan. Then importantly, the Board of Commissioners must adopt the approved plan to maintain the county's qualified local government status. Thank you for your time in this important matter. I don't know if there'll be any questions or not.
Well, I'm going to yield to the Commissioners, this is, and before I do just that, let me go to Executive Director Relidge.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. We really appreciate that. Since I've been serving as the interim planning director, I've been working closely with Mr. Johnston and our Deputy Director Christopher Wheeler. And I just wanted to add a couple of things to your presentation this morning, which was spot-on. I know planning and zoning can be a bit boring for some people, but it's a very, very important process, which we will kick off this Friday morning. We will be meeting with internal staff members of Planning and Development and with A R C to start mapping out what this will look like for us when we get started early in two thousand twenty-three. And our plan is due back to D C A, as Mr. Johnston mentioned, towards the end of two thousand twenty-three. So we're working on this all through two thousand twenty-three. And what's very exciting about this moment is that everyone, all of the stakeholders that he mentioned, would have an opportunity to give their input. We will talk about character areas, housing, U D O, anything that is all planning and zoning, and it will dovetail nicely from the Chairman's Infrastructure Committee that he has working on with A R C. We will begin to collaborate all of those big endeavors and put it into one plan that we will turn at the, turn in at the end of two thousand twenty-three. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Executive Director. I'm going to yield because this is a big deal for Rockdale County. I'm going to yield to Commissioner Washington and then to Commissioner Williams.
Well, like, as, first of all, thank you for, I guess, kicking this off here at the end of the year so that we know what's coming, but in all seriousness, this is where the rubber meets the road, I think, for Rockdale County. There's a lot of development opportunities. There's a lot of citizens' concerns, and we're hearing them, and we're hearing you all loud and clear. This is the opportunity for citizens, for all the stakeholders to come and reimagine Rockdale County, to come and, and give input on housing standards that you want to see in the community. that you want to see in the community. And, and we're telling you now that this is coming. So I expect that as, as robust as the conversations about planning and development and, and things needed have been this year, that since we're telling you that we're getting ready to start mapping out the future of the county, that there, that the conversations and the interests will be just as intense, because this is where you have the opportunity to let us know how we are going to move Rockdale forward from a planning and development initiative. And then we also have plans to have a strategic plan for the county. We're including economic development. We're, we're going to have a strategic plan for housing. This, 2023 is going to be our year for planning. And as concerned citizens, as people that care about this county, I expect that these conversations will be robust, these conversations, of course, they'll be respected, respectful, but we definitely want to hear from you, and we definitely want to use 2023 to put Rockdale County on a path so that everybody is proud and everybody knows the direction that we're moving for the future. So I don't think I had any questions, but I think those are all of my comments.
All right, Commissioner Williams.
So, so that really covered everything. The, the one thing that I was thinking about, though, was that housing piece that Commissioner Washington mentioned briefly. One of my initiatives for this next year, and I know that Commissioner Washington is, is, has it as one of her initiatives too, is that housing piece. She's looking at one piece of it, and I'm looking interested in another piece of it. And I think this is a great opportunity to figure out exactly where we want different types of housing for different types of needs, for different demographics that we have. And it is going to be a really good year. I'm looking forward to the process. Thank you so much for your work in it. Thank you to Director Rutledge for her interim work as the planning director and for all of the staff, because, because we know that they're going to work really hard this next year. So, thank you.
Well, thank you, commissioners, and thank you again, Bill, and to all of the folks in our Planning and Development Staff. I want to echo what Commissioner Williams mentioned about Executive Director Rutledge working as our interim director, and give a big shout out to Deputy Director Chris Wheeler, who's done, let's give him a round of applause. He's really done a fantastic job. Commissioner Washington has shined the spotlight on economic development in the brightest way that we can imagine. When she came up and coined the phrase reimagine Rockdale for our new strategic plan, the both of myself and Commissioner Williams said, okay, that's it, period. That's, that's going to be our theme going forward. All of it lines up. The work that we're doing with the infrastructure planning task force, the work that we're doing with the Atlanta Regional Commission, and of course, that the part that D C A, the Department of Community Affairs pulls this whole thing full circle. As there is so much development here in Rockdale County throughout COVID, from the beginning of nine, of 2019 into where we are now, there's a lot of new development in and around our community, whether you're looking at industry, retail, residential, there's been a lot going on. Our Planning and Development Department has been rocking and rolling, as we like to say here in Rockdale County. Now, we're at this juncture where we have to dot i's and cross t's, but the most critical part, and I heard the commissioner really put a lot of emphasis on this, the involvement from the community, the involvement from the community. In fact, three of the key points that Bill pointed out included, number one, stakeholders, number two, public participation, and number three, public hearings. Will all of those three things tie in together? We want to hear from you. This is about the future of Rockdale County as we continue to pivot toward progress. So let's give him another round of applause. Thank you so much. Thank you, Bill. So commissioners, one other presentation that I have this morning, and I, let me just tell you, I believe this is really, really fitting, and I'm going to ask Director Dan Morgan, if you would, turn that podium around for me, if you'd be so kind, as I make my way down. But as he's doing that, let me just tell you, as we are now in the heart of this holiday season, there's no better time to spotlight and to highlight the work that all of our small business people and our entrepreneurs are doing here in Rockdale County. I want to read this proclamation that we have this morning. And just again, before I do that, I want to just encourage all of you, as you're making your way and making plans to shop this holiday season, don't forget the local merchants here in Rockdale County. We encourage you to shop local. Before you drive eastbound or westbound on I-20, think and think again about maybe a shop or a boutique, or perhaps some type of merchant here, whether it's in Old Town or any part of Rockdale County. Give them your business. They depend on that. I want to call up, because since I read this, I want you to, if you haven't met this young lady, she's a rock star in our community, Ms. Kyrie Maitly, if you would, come on and join me. Give her a round of applause. She is certainly. Standing right there, I'm going to read, I'm going to share with you a little bit about her leadership and what she's doing in our community. There are so many people who are doing wonderful and phenomenal things behind the scenes that you don't often hear about. And I want to make sure you know that we have another rock star in Rockdale County. A proclamation, whereas Rockdale County recognizes local small businesses and entrepreneurship in our community, and whereas Ms. Kyrie Maitly, local business owner and entrepreneur, founded the Gift Brunch in 2019 with the purpose of bringing women together to celebrate and uplift themselves. And whereas, what started as a brunch for 13 women, the Gift Brunch has grown to nearly 100 women to encourage and educate and empower each other through affirming words, testimonies, life experiences. The Gift Brunch celebrates the gift of sisterhood. And whereas, as a part of the Gift Brunch, attendees bring a gift that is then shared as a gift exchange. The goal of the Gift Brunch is to form a sisterhood in Rockdale County of women from many different places to spread their love and light among one another. And whereas, the gathering of women for the Gift Brunch serves as a reminder that each woman, that no matter your walk of life, a mother, a businesswoman, a wife, girlfriend, et cetera, they all, they are all human and must always choose themselves first. In other, in order to take care of everything and everyone else, they have to take time out and celebrate the true gift themselves. And whereas, Rockdale County shares in the celebration of self-love, self-care, and upliftment, that the Gift Brunch promotes and recognizes Ms. Kyrie Maitly and the Gift Brunch for all they do for the women of Rockdale County. Therefore, we, the members of the Rockdale County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim December the 13th, 2022, in Rockdale County, as the Gift Brunch Recognition Day. In witness whereof, we have herein to set our hands and cause the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this 13th day of December. Chairman Oz Nesbit, Commissioner, Commissioner Sherry Washington, and Commissioner Dr. Doreen Williams. Let's give Kyrie Maitly a round of applause. I'm going to yield and let Ms. Maitly have a few words to talk about where she is and some of the things that she's doing here in Rockdale County. I will tell you, she's not hard to find. She's over on Parker Road, but she's going to give you the address and talk about her business hours, because we want to encourage folks to go by, support, and patronize her business. Ms. Maitly.
Good morning. I didn't have a speech planned out, so I'm going to keep it short. But my name, as he said, is Kyrie Maitly. I have two businesses in Rockdale County, both on Parker Road. My Milk and Money, you may have seen it. We're actually a dance studio, but we do a lot of pop-up shops and events for small businesses, and a lot of gatherings for women in the community. I also own Millionaire Kids Cartel, which is a kids' clothing store. We house, I think, six entrepreneurs, kidpreneurs, that sell their items in the store, and we just encourage entrepreneurship as a whole. But yeah, come see me, 1264 Parker Road, Suite F and Suite I. Those are both my businesses, but we're big on community things and, you know, community development. So come and check us out. Thank you.
Commissioners, this has been a morning loaded with great information. We highlighted all of our wonderful employees. We've got updates about the direction and the future of Rockdale County with our strategic planning, and we spotlighted a local entrepreneur and small business owner here in our community that we all can support. So we still have time. Today is the 13th. We've got a few more days before Christmas to go out and shop local, so we certainly do. And I want to recognize Ms. Maitly, her, her dad is here, Mr. Robert, he's a local face. Give him a round of applause. He's supporting his daughter this morning. Absolutely. I, I have to say this real quick, because Mr. Robert has been a longtime businessman and entrepreneur in Rockdale County. So it's not surprising that his daughter has picked up the same business acumen from him, and a lot of us have utilized his many, multiple different services and businesses that he's had over the years here in Rockdale County. Commissioners, we're just so blessed to have so many different people doing wonderful things in our community. As you've heard me say multiple times, no one gets anything done by themselves, and we certainly do appreciate that. Executive Director Rutledge, I think it's time to move forward, and we want to move with the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
My second motion.
It has been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the minutes from November the 8th, 2022, and December the 6th of 2022. What's your pleasure?
I move to approve the minutes of November 8th and December 6th, 2022.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Unfinished business, item six, item 2022-527.
Item 527 is an ordinance to make and provide appropriations for the period beginning January 1st, 2023, and ending December 31st, 2023. To make and provide such appropriations for the operations of the Rockdale County Government, its departments, boards, and other agencies and funds, including all elected county officers and their employees, to provide for the control and administration of all funds of such agencies from all sources, to provide an effective date to repeal conflicting ordinances and resolutions, and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading this morning.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It has been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions or comments about the appropriations for the calendar year 2023?
Well, of course, I have comments. Just, well, I have some comments too, but do we want to approve it first, or?
What's your pleasure, commissioners? You want to move forward with approving it?
Yes.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's give the Finance Department a round of applause. We're going to yield at this juncture. I think this is the appropriate time, commissioners. I'm going to start with Commissioner Washington regarding the appropriations for 2023.
As I said earlier, 2023 is going to be where the rubber meets the road for Rockdale County. In this budget, we have, we are accounting for salary increases for our employees. And to me, that's very important, because we came from, I don't, I don't think that the Sheriff's Office has contacted us one time, telling us that we need to increase the salaries for the employees. Now, we have a, a, there's a sign on Signal Road saying that they have a pay increase. We have done several things to shore up our departments. You heard from the Department of Technology Services, all of the certifications that were coming out of that department. We didn't have that before, before recently. So thank you, Director Margaret Moore Jackson, in making sure that our technology is safe and secure. Those cybersecurity certifications, those are huge, because early on, when I was elected, we, our systems were failing almost daily, and it was taking weeks to get back online. We had two breaches of security, and now we're doing the things so that we are enabling our employees with the knowledge and the technology to keep those things from happening. Our community is safe. Our sheriff is doing, and his staff are doing a very, very fine job of making sure that our community is safe, and that's part of this budget. I've already mentioned training. This county is, is safe, it's secure, it's working on having the highest possible education so that we can move this county until the next level. And, and the, to the citizens, we thank you for trusting us with this budget and trusting us, trusting that we are going to utilize public funds to make sure that this is the best county that we, that in the state of Georgia. And I truly believe that this budget with everything that is in it is going to help achieve that goal.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Williams?
So I'd just like to start out saying thank you to Director Lewis for taking us through this whole process of the budget this year. It's been a pretty seamless kind of process, as there's been a lot of communication and input from each of the commissioners on priorities and listening to citizens and, and trying to incorporate that. And so we thank you, Director Lewis, for, for your work in leading and guiding us through this. I did want to add one thing. We've increased salaries for everybody, but we've also put into the budget the hiring of extra personnel for the fire department.
Right.
And including staffing station 10.
Yes.
And that will be, you know, that will be huge as we move forward in providing for the safety and the, of Rockdale citizens and also of their personal property and, and personal safety, making sure that they're educated, that we have the fire personnel to be out there and be effective. And so, again, we appreciate Chief McDaniel's efforts in, in leading that and making sure that we were aware of the needs of, of her department. Most of the departments submitted a flat budget, and we appreciate that also, knowing that, that that's important in moving forward, that we can keep our, our village rate as low as possible. But, and speaking of that, in 2023, we also have, besides our comprehensive land use plan, our strategic plan, and our infrastructure committee, we also have our judicial complex plan that is coming together as that committee is working. And we will be moving forward in 2023 with that process also.
Yes.
A desperately needed addition to Rockdale County in providing services, in providing appropriate workspace for each of the employees, appropriate courtrooms. And so 2023 is going to be a very, very big year.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, commissioners, and thank you both for your support and approving the 2023 budget. I want to also give a big shout out again to all of our department directors, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Williams is exactly right. All of our budgets came in at a flat level, understanding where we are in terms of the economy, also understanding the need to make sure that we take care of the people that take care of Rockdale County, our employees. Also understanding that we're on the brink of change and progress and moving forward in this community. And as the community grows, as the community change, so does the government. Has to be able to meet all of those needs in order of the service to people in the community. Lady sent a long, long email two weeks ago in reference to Fire Station Number 10 on Highway 138 North. She lives in the North Hampton subdivision. And she, she started her email off with something like, "How long will the 'coming soon' sign stand up here before you start construction on the new fire station?" And I thanked her first for sending the email. And I shared with her, Chief McDaniel, that we have to make sure that we hire personnel. I talked about the challenge of the Great Resignation and the competition of getting qualified people all across the metro area. But I told her that we had to deal with staffing, that we were currently, Dylan was working through some staffing issues right now. But what we did not want to do was build a fire station and have an empty shell just standing out there without it being occupied with apparatus and personnel in order to support the people in the northern area of Rockdale County. But they are excited. The northern section of Rockdale County where Fire Station 10 will be, those folks are really excited. It's going to have a positive impact on their ISO ratings, the response time in terms of the response of our fire department, being able to get to the folks in that area much quicker. Right now, they're relying on the station that's there at Sigmund and 138 and/or maybe the folks coming out of Walton County. And I think Station 5 that's coming down White Road, High Tower, which would take a good bit of time coming down that curvy road of High Tower if you're driving the fire truck or a ladder truck trying to get to a response. So having Fire Station 10 is a big deal. People are paying attention here in the county. Going back to what Commissioner Washington said, as we announcing that we're moving forward, we want the input, we want the feedback from the citizens so that we can continue to move Rockdale County. 2023 will be an exciting year. These appropriations will allow us to do what we need to do to continue to move Rockdale County forward. Let's give our Finance Department once again another round of applause. All right, Executive Director Relich, we're going to move on to item number 2022-534.
All right, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I would like to request that the board take item 534 and 535 together. So I will read out both of them and then ask for the vote. Item 534 is a future land use case, 2022-09, an ordinance to amend the future land use map of Rockdale County's comprehensive plan as amended. So as to re-designate property located at Zero Glen Road Northeast from medium-density residential future land use category to the high-density residential land use category. To repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is submitted for a second reading. Item 535 is rezoning case 2022-12, an ordinance to amend the official zoning district map of Rockdale County as amended by rezoning Zero Glen Road Northeast from R1 Single Family Residential to RM Residential Multifamily. To impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes, this is also submitted for a second reading this morning.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
So I move to approve the second reading and to adopt these ordinances as presented to include the conditions as required and as stated in the staff report and as an exhibit to these ordinances and with the amended site plan.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. We'll let the record reflect that Commissioner Washington votes nay.
Thank you.
All right.
So I, I just, this was, this one has been a really difficult one to look at. And my initial reaction was not particularly favorable. But when the environmental report came back and they had adjusted their site plan so as not to interfere with any of those wetlands or water sources at all in, in connection with the EPD and the other environmental studies, I just felt like there was no real reason that we could deny this one.
Commissioner, any comments?
Well, like we just spent about 20 minutes discussing, we're getting ready to start our comprehensive land use plan. And I feel at this point, we should be more, that we should let more people say what they want and where they want the, the community to move forward with planning and development before we approve site plans that are just being put upon us without the, the new comprehensive plan. I'm just wanting for us to slow down development until we get more citizen input, until we have done more education about the way we want Rockdale County to move forward. And, and those are my concerns. I do appreciate the fact that the developers did come in and address a lot of their concerns. But I would just, I would, my thought about development is that we should be more, we should slow it down until after we get movement or, or a handle on where we're going in the community. And, and we're starting the comprehensive land, I mean, we're starting that process now. So to me, there's no reason to, to hurry these things forward when we can wait until we have the, the direction from the community. And that's why I voted nay.
And thank you so much, Commissioner. We're moving right on now to item number seven, the consent agenda.
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as listed below.
And I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. You all are rock, y'all are rocking and rolling this morning, Commissioners. Yes, item number eight.
Right. Item 642 is with Snapping Shoals EMC through the Board of Commissioners Office. This is a memorandum of understanding for a payment drop box and safety ballard to be located at the Sheriff's Office South Side Precinct at Honey Creek Village Shopping Center next to the Water Resources Payment Drop Box. This is at no cost to the county and is five years with option to renew in increments of five years.
Ooh, I think this is great.
It is great.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, any comments or questions on this one?
No, I can just imagine that when I lived in Honey Creek, that would have been really, really nice.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let me just take a moment first to, I, I think this is really super convenient, but I want to give a big shout out to Sheriff Levin and his team. The Honey Creek Precinct out there is, is a very convenient location. And to be able to put this, it's well lit, it's right there on the front of the face of the road. People can see folks dropping off right there. It's safe and it's super convenient. So thank you, Sheriff, and your team for agreeing to be a part of this with Snapping Shoals to better serve our citizens here in Rockdale County. So thank you so much. Next item, item 643.
Item 643 is a policy amendment to the Rockdale County Animal Services Fee Schedule. This is policy 2021-2-9 as amended.
I move to approve this policy, oops, it's not my turn. Go ahead. I move to approve this policy amendment as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 644 is with M. Carter, A. Beg and Associates. This is a memorandum of understanding for the County Attorney Legal Services, Contract 2019-90 and Contract 2019-14 as amended for eighteen thousand, for eighteen, eight thousand a month up to 46 hours at $175 per hour for attorney services and $75 per hour for paralegal services. This is for two years with automatic renewals for two additional one-year terms.
So I move to approve this contract also as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Let me just take a moment and give our county attorney a round of applause.
Who is also a judge.
2022 has been a very productive year, a year of education and learning on all fronts. It's been a very intense year. And our county attorney has certainly led us from January all the way through December again this year, doing a fantastic job in so many different ways. And not just out here at the BOC meetings because we have to call on he and his team oftentimes on many different things, multiple things that impact or involve county government. So we certainly do, thank you, Attorney Beg, you and your team for the great work that you all have done. Let's give them another round of applause. Okay, moving forward, item number 645.
Item 645 is with ACCG Insurance Programs through the Talent Management Department. This is for workers' compensation and employer's liability deductible endorsement and addendum to the ACCG GSIWCF Interest Date Agreement, and this is for one year.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item 646 is with Cott Systems Incorporated through the Clerk of Court's Office. This is Resolution 3 Hosted Services in the amount of $42,820 and $3,015 monthly. This is for 60 months.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned. And second, are there any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
All right, so we're down to public comment, Mr. Chairman. We have two that have been turned in. I don't know if anyone else needs to turn in a comment card. I'll go ahead and read the disclaimer. Thank you. As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning, or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other, or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an appropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
Thank you, Executive Director Relich. I want to first call up our first speaker, former chairman, Richard Oden. Come on up, Chairman Oden.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hope all is well. I bring you greetings from the Oden family. And also, as a small business and government consultant who's registered in Rockdale County, have a small business consulting practice due to government and business consulting, strategic planning, economic development, et cetera, et cetera. I will be paying my dues on January for my business license for two organizations. My subject matter is very brief. It's really initially called "The Elephant in the Room." I want to address the elephant in the room today before you. But before I do that, I want to at least give you what the purpose of Rockdale County is. Rockdale County is a perfectly positioned community with a rock solid approach dedicated to excellence in customer service and quality of life and global economic development. That is the mission statement put in place many, many years ago by the citizens, by the residents, by the staff of Rockdale County. I want to address something that happened in 2009 called the Rockdale County Judicial System Expansion Proposal and the Decision. Multiple concerned citizens are calling into question and asking for immediate action. The current Board of Commissioner leadership and manager of business decision-making process and the reason why the Rockdale County taxpayers is paying more for judicial center expansion in Old Town and buying property when the county owns 42 acres on Parker Road. In 2009, the team of Cousins Real Estate Corporation and Harry International presented to the county its Parker Road and the City of Conyers Judicial Center Expansion Site Proposal Comparison as requested by the Board of Commissioners and Commissioner, use of Commissioner, Commissioner Nesbit, with the estimated completion time, two years. So by 2012, the expansion of the judicial center should have been completed. And I have the facts here for you. In Old Town, the cost at that time was $80 million, $656 compared to the Parker Road site, which was $62 million, $448, 861 cents. That's a difference of $17 million, $979,570. I do have with me, I want to submit to you, each one of you, and it's going to take me a second to walk to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
These are the facts that was presented back then. Well, my time is done. I'd like to finish my statement if I may.
Please do.
These are the facts that I want to give to the... As I close, I've got another statement. I'll come back another time. The facts of this matter is that the county owned 42 acres. And the other question becomes in the fact that that property was leased to a Mr. Jeff Beach, for whatever reason. The plan is already in place. I believe Sue Sanders has the copies of the master, the preliminary plans. And I think the county should look at those plans because that Parker Road site already has sewer and necessary infrastructure just needs to be moved upon. I thank you for your time, and I want to congratulate all of the recipients today for the rewards they received. Congratulations for all that. Congratulations on moving the county forward. I'd like to see us do more in terms of innovation, advanced manufacturing, and not so many warehouses with trucks. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for all that you've done on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. George Kellechak. Come on up, Mr. Kellechak.
Good morning, everyone, citizens of Rockdale County Board. As E.B. White told us once, "I'm still encouraged to go on. I would not know where else to go." Well, I'm in the same situation. In 2021, the Haynes Watershed Foundation, a 501(c)(3), was adopted through the State Secretary of State and through the Internal Revenue Service to committed an ecological restoration of Haynes Watershed in the Randy Portner Reservoir for the benefit of nature and mankind. Currently, I know that the USGS, which is only a measurement agency, is doing a study regarding the silt and other eco-environmental issues in Randy Portner Reservoir. The bigger issue is the Haynes Watershed. And I just wanted to give you a few encouraging words of what's going on. This has been shared with your department managers. As you know, Mr. Nesbit, we had that meeting, and we are continuing to work with them. But we're also working with Gwinnett, Walton, Newton, and Gwinnett Counties. We've met with their Soil and Water Districts. We've met with their county officials. And they've done some great things already in the watershed, and I'll provide copies of this. Gwinnett County has the best drinking water in the state. And they did a project on the Big Haynes Wetland and the Brushy Fort Creek using EPA funds. They're out there. So I will provide you that and a narrative. But a couple of things regarding this wetland that we're going to have to check into that y'all approved. If there was not a permit 404 issued by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, then we're in violation of federal law. Secondly, I'm going to provide you Section 391-3-1601, which provides you all the state regulations and federal regulations regarding watersheds and wetlands to make sure that you have the updated information. Just to let you know, the Haynes Watershed Foundation was successful in completing a stop work... Just to let you know, the Haynes Watershed Foundation was successful in completing a stop work order in Gwinnett County. We found an excavator in Brushy Fort Creek, which is illegal, so they've statute a stop work order. We'll be meeting with them this Thursday. Also, there is a renewed Environmental Protection Division issued regarding Copart in South Walton County, which is destroying our watershed. Also, there's two illegal activities going on on the Johnson property. One is violation of Code 51-9-7 where they have diverted national and state waters. And finally, in Section 206 of the UDO, and it states, "They are operating a hazardous waste industrial de-watering operation." And it says specifically here that you cannot generate or utilize hazardous or toxic waste are prohibited in the watershed. We've got work to do. We're behind you all. We're meeting with the governor next month because we're gonna need a lot of horsepower to get all these issues. Again, it's not your fault and not this administration's fault, but we knew since 2001 we had issues, okay? We're gonna work with the counties and all the way to the federal government to get this issue corrected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kellacheek, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Next up is Mr. Peter Bourne. Come on up, Mr. Bourne.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This is Chairman Nesbit, Commissioner Washington, as well as Commissioner Williams, to all the directors, support staff, and everyone in attendance and online. My name is Peter Bourne. I'm a retired chief officer who served twenty years in the United States Navy.
Thank you for your service.
I've been a resident of Rockdale County since 2014. Our beautiful wife, Ro, and I run the Bourne Financial Group of Atlanta as well as the Bourne Alliance Group located on 2445 Salem Road in the Ingle Shopping Center, where we focus on financial education, veterans assistance, tax planning and preparation, just to name a few things that we do there. But I did not come here today to talk about myself. I came here to say thank you, alright? I came here to say thank you for all the hard work that you guys do, for all the long hours, for pushing through, even though that you may feel unappreciated sometimes. You might feel unappreciated sometimes for your efforts. Change can be difficult for some people, and they might lash out at our public officials. I don't want you to, I want you to remember not to take that personally, okay? Remember, you are appreciated. I appreciate you. My family appreciates all the hard work you guys do. I've seen Conyers grow for the better since I've been here. I know this because it's the hard work that you guys put in, all the hard work you guys put in, and your efforts continue to propel Rockdale County into a shining example for all the counties to follow and all of the cities to follow. I feel incredibly lucky to have landed here in Rockdale County. What we have here is something special. I've lived all over the country over the past twenty years, and I could tell you for sure that this is something special, and it should not be taken for granted. I've seen what poor governance can do to a community. I've seen what poor leadership can do to an organization. Leadership. We have excellent leadership in Rockdale County. Do not take that lightly. With all that being said, I would like to say happy holidays, alright? Good work. Continue what you're doing. I'm excited about the new initiative. I'm truly lucky to be a part of Rockdale County, alright? I just want to say thank you. That's it.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bourne. Wow, thank you, Mr. Bourne. What a way to close out the public comment for 2022.
Another round of applause.
Chief McDaniel has requested that he gets three more minutes. But I certainly do appreciate, let me just tell you, I can't tell you the reason you're seeing the smiles not just on the commissioners' face but our staff because it is really refreshing to hear from citizens to know that we are appreciated and that we do have the best interests of all of our citizens and our employees at heart. When you're in the people business, when you are in the people business like we are, you have to be able to have thick skin to take the good, the bad, and the ugly. It's just part of it. It comes with it. But every now and then, we welcome to hear a refreshing, positive word about at least one thing we're doing right. Let's give Mr. Bourne another round of applause. Absolutely, absolutely. And to have a workforce of employees, whether you're talking about the Sheriff's Office, the Fire Department, water, parks, or all of our departments, because our employees, even though the citizens come and direct the information towards the Board of Commissioners, they listen to the part that includes and impact them in their various departments and divisions. So they take it for what it's worth, and it matters to them. So I just can't say enough. Maybe I'm taking up his three minutes that was requested by Chief McDaniel to give him another three minutes to continue to speak positively about the good things that are happening in Rockdale County. I think it's important that none of us take this community for granted. When I, oftentimes, I said this, I've said this all through the years, Sheriff Levitt, about the fact that people watch the local news all around Metro Atlanta, and every now and then, they hear a little something, something going on in Rockdale County. But we are not that county that is constantly on the news because between the Conyers Police Department and the Rockdale Sheriff's Office and the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue and all of our public safety folks, the fine people over at the emergency 911, we do a good job at keeping this community safe. So give it up for public safety and making sure that Rockdale County is not that county that's always, always on the local news at 5:10 and 11. Yeah, every now and then, there's a little something, but we're not that county that's repeatedly on the news. We're a safe community, and it gives me bragging rights as the chairman of the county when I'm engaging with other commissioners and other chairmen throughout the region to be able to loudly and proudly say that we are not only the best county in the state of Georgia, one hundred and fifty-nine counties, but we are the safest county in Metro Atlanta, and I do believe in the state of Georgia. Give public safety another round of applause if you will. And I have to say this, Commissioners, that as we continue to move throughout this holiday season, there's no other time of year where public safety becomes ever so important than this particular time of year. As we're transitioning into the new year, we're encouraging folks to be alert and be aware as they move throughout the community. I'm gonna yield, we have a ton of excitement here, but I'm gonna yield to the commissioners, Commissioner Washington. I'll start with you with board comment.
You know, it's funny because as I move around the county, I hear you. It's like you're on my shoulders. Be aware, be safe, all of those things that you say. I'm, I, it's like you're in my head, and that's not a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good thing. That's a good thing.
Can I just interrupt you? When I was out this last week and it was after dark.
And I remembered the same thing. I thought, okay, be aware of my surroundings.
Like your children.
Not your children, but like children. Let me, let me move into. First of all, thank you, Mr. Bourne. You know, some, I believe that there's no accidents and sometimes God puts things and people exactly where you need them, when you need them, and that was definitely true today. This has been a long year. It's been a difficult year. It's been a year full of challenges and changes and everything. And for you to, at the end of the year, come and tell us, you know, the appreciation for all that we've done, for all of the community meetings, for all of the committee meetings, the extra things that all three of us have done for this county, it means everything to me. So if I don't get another gift this holiday season, that was it. Thank you so, so much for those words. Thank you. That being said, before the chair even started on his thank you to public safety, I wanted to thank the sheriff and the fire chief. I've said it over and over again, this is the safest community. One of the things, anybody who's ever gone through the election process, I go door to door. And one of the things about some of the neighborhoods in this community, when people are home, they leave their garage doors open. And that's way, all of their neighbors know that they're home, and they can go to the houses and, you know, because you know they're home because the garage doors are... Where do you hear that? Where do you hear that happening, but in Rockdale County? And that's because the people feel safe in their neighborhoods, and that's because of the Sheriff's Department. I always say that if something goes wrong, if somebody calls 911 in Rockdale County, and there's an emergency, fire and rescue get there first. And I'd say it over and over again, the time that somebody had a heart attack in my, on my street, I thought the street was burning down because we had about six fire trucks on the street. The man's life was saved. He was eventually, the ambulance eventually came and took him to the hospital. But it was fire and rescue that was there first that saved the man's life. And that's why we put so much emphasis on fire and rescue, and we said it that the staffing of Fire Station 10 is in this budget, and that provides that level of safety to those communities, that community on the north side of the, of the, of the county. So I'm looking forward to that. So thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Marion, I'm sorry, Chief McDaniel, for all the work you all do to keep this community safe, and I'm hoping that I'm giving you the gift that was given to me, showing our appreciation. That being said, the holidays are amongst us. The chairman's gonna tell you all to be safe. My voice isn't as resounding as his, so you might not hear my voice in your head, but please be safe, especially the ladies as we're out. You know, be mindful of your situations. Don't walk around with a hundred bags in your hand. Go to your car, put them in the car, lock the car. I'm talking to myself. Lock the car. Make sure that you, you know, doing all the things that it takes to be safe because we want to get into this next year with no problems. So moving into next year, because I'm not going to see you all until, what, the 24th? Twenty?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, okay. The 24th. First of, Happy New Year. But we will begin our Small Business Mixers again, January 10th. We are moving the location from, to, over here to Frozen Notes, the karaoke bar. So Ms. Kyrie, I expect to see you. We're gonna, to have a good time. We're gonna do the karaoke and do the Small Business Mixer. It'll be from 6:00 to 9:00, Andre, on Tuesday, January 10th. So that's right down the street from you, Commissioner Williams. So I expect to see you with your song, getting ready, Chairman.
Absolutely.
I cannot wait to see you with your karaoke mic in hand. We're looking for...
Those old school notes, I'll be...
They have it all. Anybody who has known me since Frozen Notes has opened has been in, has had a treat. We have, there's video of me and the, and the fire chief singing Christmas carols, which she and I are paying handsome money for it not to be released. It's a great time at Frozen Notes, and I don't want to do their commercial, but it's, we've always had a good time. Also, MLK Day is a day of service. Please pick something. So much of us have so many things to be grateful for. Take a few hours to give back to the community on MLK Day. Also, this holiday season, give the gift of gratitude while you're, you're giving physical gifts. Take a minute to reflect on all of the great things that we have to be grateful for. I mean, so many of us have our health, our families, and so many different things, so we wanted to be grateful. I think that's all I have. So with that being said, thank you two for, gosh, being such a great board to work for. We have hammered out so many things this year, and I think we did a good job with respecting each other's differences, different personalities, and we've, we've done it, and I think with grand fashion. So I'm looking forward to 2023 because we got a lot going on in 2023, but I think we're gonna do it with grand fashion. So happy holidays to you and your families. Thank you so much again. Once again, because he's given me the gift of great words, that you all have been amazing to work with, amazing to move this direction, move this county in a positive direction. So I thank you, and I am extremely grateful for both of you. So if I never say it again, I've said it on camera.
Duly noted.
Alright, and happy holidays to everybody else.
Thank you, Commissioner Washington. Commissioner Williams.
Oh, I don't even know where to start. So I wanted to give several updates. We had our stepping up steering committee in-person meeting last week, and we heard some updates and, and I just wanted to share some of those with you. Again, 2022 has been a really, really huge year for our initiative in moving forward with our criminal justice and mental health initiative of stepping up. Historically, we passed a resolution in 2015 by we, I mean, the current, the sitting Board of Commissioners at that time and the Sheriff's Office, and looking forward to and addressing the inmates and the community with mental health problems and where they intersect with criminal justice. So we hired in January, well, let me go back a couple of years. We've hired a project developer. We've hired a project, a program manager several years ago. They have done tremendous work in working with our, in coordination with the Sheriff's Office, with mental health providers, with the jail staff, in looking for the best outcomes for those who have tendencies to recidivize and repeat offenses. And this year, several things new have happened. One, we initiated what's called the Opening Doors to Recovery Project. It's based on a project that was done in Savannah about ten years ago, and we wanted to implement it here. And so the person, Nora Haynes, who oversaw that project in Savannah, is overseeing the project here, working with, with our, our community. And what that means is we've got a three-person intensive case management program where there's a mental health clinician, a parent, a family member who's certified to work with other families who are having issues with substance abuse, mental health, criminal justice issues, and then a peer. The new, the newest model nationwide recognizes how important those peers are. Peers are people with lived experience. They've also had addictions. They've also deal with mental health challenges. They, many of them have also been involved in the criminal justice system. They have since been able to go into recovery. And then they, there is a certification program where they can become certified peer specialists. And we have certified a number of peer specialists this year and last year right for their work here in Rockdale County. So this three- this year and last year, right, for their work here in Rockdale County. So this three-person team works with, um, folks coming out of the jail, transitioning back into the community. And they have four pillars of support. One, stable housing. Two, access to treatment. Three, access to technology. And four, some kind, something that makes their day meaningful to them. Something that gives them a purpose. Um, it could be, uh, educational skills. It could be a job. Um, whatever it is for each person. And this team is having some unique experiences. I just wanted to share briefly, um, an opportunity the sheriff and I had to work very closely on one of the participants in that program. He, um, had gotten out of jail and was doing, had just started into the ODR program, when he decided he was going to go visit his girlfriend in DeKalb County. And that didn't go well. And, um, law enforcement in DeKalb was called. I should note that one of the, um, important concepts in this program is that they agree to be entered into the GCI system. So that when law enforcement anywhere in the state encounters this person, they know that they're involved in a program. DeKalb County was not interested in honoring that and wouldn't call the number that was associated with that. So the young man did call his, uh, advise, his coordinator, what, his case manager. And so they knew that what was happening. When he got to jail, they did not give him his medication. And then another, he, you know, received another charge. And so, um, the sheriff and I, 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 the team tried to do what they could do. Then they, they contacted me to try to see if I could do anything. So I immediately called the sheriff, who immediately called DeKalb County Sheriff. And within a few days, we're able to get this young man back on his meds, get him bonded out, get him back home and participating again appropriately. That's the kind of communication that's been working so well in Rockdale County. And it is to the benefit of some of our most vulnerable citizens. So that has been a, a great boon this year to add that program. The other thing that's been added is, um, co-responder pro- projects, programs. The city of Conyers has implemented the co-responder program, and it's been working for almost a year. And they've actually added a second clinician who ri- goes with and responds to those calls to nine one one that have to do with, um, mental health and substance use issues. The sheriff has also, um, adopted a co-responder problem that will be implemented in, beginning in March. This is going to be huge for our community. You know, people talk about defunding the police. We're not defunding anything. We're actually putting more funding into our public safety at the benefit of our community, but also at the benefit of these individuals. And we're seeing, seeing less recidivism because of it, which means we're seeing safer communities, safer families, and, um, children who are doing better in schools because they're now having connections with their, with their parents. Um, the, and then the, the big thing that we, uh, accomplished this year was the purchase of the judicial complex, the, the restorative justice complex, um, on Highway one thirty-eight. That as we are working with federal funding and state DBHDD funding, we will be able to establish a community's, a crisis service center that will be open twenty-four hours, seven days a week, to receive people, not just walk-ins, but also it will be a place where law enforcement can take someone who's having a crisis instead of taking them to the emergency room who's not equipped to deal with these kinds of issues or booking them into jail. And we know because of this, lives will be saved. Um, many times, uh, the life of the, the own, the person being treated. Um, so I, I couldn't be more grateful to the work that everyone has done in implementing this, in approving this purchase that was paid for by ARPA funds, and the collaboration with Senator Warnock, with those from DBHDD at the state level, um, in providing services and funding for us. Um, it's going to be a great, uh, a, a great asset to our county. We are also looking at collaborating with neighboring counties and having, uh, working with them. Piedmont Rockdale Hospital has, um, greatly improved their, uh, services, and they are working with us also. So it's, I, there's lots to look forward to in 2023 in terms of, uh, our mental, the intersection of mental health and criminal justice. Along with that, I mentioned earlier the, uh, hous- housing initiatives. And we're, we are starting, going to start with a housing study of what is it that we have in Rockdale County and what is it that we need. Um, we know from some of the ARC data that we are lacking in all kinds of housing here in Rockdale County. Um, so it's not like there isn't a need. We know there is a need for all kinds of housing. Um, Commissioner Washington is kind of working on that, um, affordable housing.
Workforce.
Work, affordable housing, workforce housing, which is a kind of a misnomer of a term because affordable housing is not affordable for many, many people. My, uh, my take and my focus is going to be on transitional housing and very low-income housing. So that we can accommodate these people coming out of transitioning out of incarceration, transitioning out of, you know, they may have lost a job, what, whatever the situation. Um, and so I think we're, we're going to be able to cover the gamut of housing needs in looking at them in 2023. I'm very excited about it. There's, there are lots of things to be done out there. Um, okay. On another note, uh, Thursday is the swearing in for Judge Bills, Judge Cuthbert, Judge Reed, District Attorney Johnson, and myself. And so. Um, I'm excited about that. Um, I've shared with a few that my, my brother is coming in. In fact, he arrives today from California. He, um, is a musician and he'll be providing the entertainment. I'm excited about that. Um, so not only will it be a great community event, it will be a family event for me also, which, um, I really appreciate. And so my, my Christmas theme this year has been and continues to be hope. Um, so now, I actually sent out a few Christmas cards this week, a handful.
[laughing]
And they, they, that's the message of them is hope. And I was immediately drawn to those particular cards because of that message, that we need hope in everything that we do. We need the optimism and the faith that comes with hope, that brings peace in the middle of turmoil, that personal peace. Christmas and the holidays can be a difficult time for some people. And, and I know that. I understand that. Um, but I am hoping that hope will win out, that even in, um, those days when you feel like nobody cares or your life is not meaningful, that there is a sliver of hope that can carry you through. And, um, so I'd just like to close by saying Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Washington, any additional thoughts?
Well, I just wanted to, um, to say that I'm also interested in where we're putting high-end housing in Rockdale County.
Yes.
So workforce and high-end, that's, that's me.
Okay, that's all. Yeah, so we've got that, we've got two people working on two different aspects of housing.
Right.
It's going to be really exciting.
Exactly. Okay.
That's all.
Well, I want to start out by saying thank you to both Commissioner Washington and-
Oh, I didn't say thank you to both of you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So thank you to both of you all. Uh, you're absolutely correct. This has been a fast-paced year, and we have made it to the final, uh, meeting of the year. There's a lot of excitement as we prepare for 2023. Uh, before I get into some of the things about 2023 in my wrap-up comments very quickly here, I do want to, uh, bring, uh, to everybody's mind. And basically, this message is for, uh, all of our senior population and those folks who are living alone, particularly the seniors. Uh, this timely year tend to be an increase in terms of fire safety. And Chief McDaniel and her team have done a fantastic job going to so many different areas throughout Rockdale County, making certain that our senior citizens, uh, have up-to-date, uh, smoke detectors and firearms, and they're changing out batteries. So thanks again, Chief McDaniel, uh, to you and your staff for doing it. But all of those folks, we can't get to every house. So I want to say to folks who are watching and listening to this broadcast, if you have a senior that's a part of your home or a part of your life, and you can go by and, and check on grandma or auntie or, or big daddy, whomever the case may be, and make sure you change out the battery in the smoke detector. You can really make a big, big difference. So I want to say that to everybody. This is, that time of year, we see multiple stories on the news about fire and, and, and tragedies happening. And it's always extra sad when it's during the holidays. So don't take this for granted. And to all of the clergy in Rockdale County, all of the three hundred-plus churches we have, if you're watching this broadcast, make sure you take care of your parishioners and members of your congregation by mentioning this on Tuesday, Wednesday night Bible study, and on Sunday morning when you go to service because we want to do everything we can to save the lives of everybody, but particularly our seniors throughout this holiday season. Just wanted to make sure I mentioned that because this is one of those times that people, uh, encounter some of those tragic events in, in surrounding, uh, fire and fire safety. One of the things, uh, so many things that we're excited about for 2023, but I have to just tell you, uh, again, if we talked multiple times about the judicial complex and the courthouse here in Rockdale County, it's one of the most popular venues all across metro Atlanta to film a movie or do a movie shoot here in Rockdale County. Our courthouse was built in between nineteen thirty-six and nineteen thirty-nine. So that's why we're so popular for all those old movies. They come into Rockdale County into Old Town. But I'm super excited about the judicial complex and the work of the task force and us moving this county forward. Over one hundred years, it's time that we move forward. We're excited about that. I'm looking for some more good news as we make our way in the first quarter, uh, of 2023 and move toward a groundbreaking ceremony to move forward with the expansion of the courthouse and the judicial complex, uh, here in, uh, Rockdale County, in Old Town, Kanye, I might say. Also want to say to, uh, all of the folks, again, thank you out in the Lake Capri area and community for your patience. And I want to give another round of applause to Director Kelly and his team. Give him a round of applause. I tell you, two years plus, uh, the Rock Bridge Road Bridge was out. We did not repair that bridge. We replaced it. It will take us fifty-plus years, uh, in the future here in Rockdale County, a brand-new bridge. I will tell you that the young man, there's a young man that goes to the same barber shop, uh, I do over on, on West Avenue. He's a pizza hut deliverer, he's a pizza deliverer for Domino's on West Avenue. Uh, at the barber shop, he said to me, Mr. Chairman, he says, I don't know if I'm supposed to thank you or who I'm supposed to thank. He said, but my deliveries are going back up because I can scoot through Rock Bridge Road and deliver that pizza. So there's a whole lot of people were waiting on that bridge to reopen on Rock Bridge Road. But thank you to the folks at the Lake Capri, um, subdivision, particularly to all of those residents that live on the, uh, Rock Bridge Road area and the surrounding area. Uh, now it is opened up for public safety, our fire apparatus, our sheriff's office, uh, ambulance service, all of our emergency services can get through there and get there in a time. And then we've taken all of that traffic that has been going through the neighborhood of those folks over in Lake Capri, we put it back on Rock Bridge Road now, and that reduces the whole headache and the stress of folks, uh, in that community. So I just had to give another big shout-out. And by the way, that bridge looks good, too. I said, yeah, it's, we've got something to be proud of here in Rockdale County. Also, uh, Mr. Corey Brown and Doug Chandler from Code Enforcement and our community improvement team said, Chairman, don't close the year out without talking about war on litter. Oh, my goodness. I tell you, Corey Brown and the team from our community improvement team, along with Code Enforcement, they are working sunup and sundown to pick up all the trash and debris in and around Rockdale County. If you see something, please say something. Uh, it says so much about our community when we're littered with trash and debris because that kind of element invites other things into our community. And this is especially the time of year where people are getting a lot of some gifts and stuff. And I do have a message for the folks that live over in the apartment complexes. We love you, we love you, we love you. But we'll love you more if you slow down before you hit the street and take that bag off the top of your car and put it in the dumpster dumpster. So no one won't hit it and trash is all over the road. Because we see, send the community improvement team out there on Monday. They're back there on Wednesday as if they hadn't even done it. Be mindful. Please be mindful. I, I wish the leasing office at the apartment complexes could erect a sign that said, "Don't forget to dump," before people leave. Because what happens, I don't really believe that people are doing this intentionally. I believe they put the bag on the car, they get in the vehicle, they put the seatbelt on, they're back in go-to-work mode. They forgot just that quick that they put the bag on the car, and they leave. And before you know it, there's trash all up and down, uh, Centennial Park out there by K- Kenwick Village, uh, Sigmund Road where the apartments are on Sigmund Road. It's a hot mess. Slow it down. The war on litter is going on day in and day out. And I know that our community improvement team and our Code Enforcement Division would certainly do appreciate people being mindful how you dispose of your trash and your litter. I also want to say a big congratulations to, uh, Dr. Doreen Williams and all of the elected officials, uh, who are being sworn in on the fifteenth. Uh, Rockdale County continues to move in the right direction with the right kind of leadership that will take us into the future in this community. We've got a lot to be proud of. So thank you and congratulations to you, Dr. Williams, and all of the elected officials that will be sworn in on the fifteenth of this month. I want to, uh, yes, Commissioner Washington, I do want to remind everybody that, uh, this is a time of year, you have to be safe. You have to be extra vigilant and alert as you move throughout the community. Put your thinking cap on and put it on tight. Uh, we have all kind of scammers out there. And this year, uh, I don't know the stats because, uh, but I'm sure somebody at CPD or the sheriff's office may know the stats. But this has been an increased year of fraud and scam. I mean, there's some flim-flam artists out there that's just tricking people out of their money, uh, all kind of things that are happening. People are posted up at the service stations, and they're watching and they're lurking. You have to be alert as you move around the community. I also want to wrap it up by simply saying Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Executive Director Ralich, is there any need?
I'm not going.
Is there any need?
If there's a need, I'm not going.
Is there any need for executive session this afternoon?
Let me see. Hmm, let's see. No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Happy Tuesday. Be safe, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year. This meeting is adjourned.
We did it again.
[laughing]
We did it again.